The Commission will be back in order to resume its business meeting and we will take up work session item number two, which is docket number 2024.05.053. Northwestern Energy's application to increase electric and natural gas service rates and to consider a final decision in Northwestern's combined electric and natural gas rate case. I will note that this work session may continue to tomorrow. So with that, we will open up with the staff presentation to the Commission. Thank you.
Good afternoon Chair Fielder and Commissioners. My name is Haley Gobert. I am a Senior Rate Analyst in the Regulatory Division. With me at the table today are Analyst Brooke Umstead and Staff Attorney Teresa Omenz. Should the needs arise during Commission questions, Analyst Neil Templeton, Mike Dalton, Grant Fink and Tim Nursead are in the room and Dagan Lynch is online. For your consideration today is docket 2024.05.053, Northwestern's combined electric and natural gas rate case. A staff memo was distributed to the Commission on November 13th and as you will see, there are about 10 recommendations outlined in the memo. Staff recommends the Commission approve all 10 recommendations and authorize staff to draft a final order reflecting the Commission's decisions. Please note that the staff memo contains and relies on confidential information highlighted yellow in the confidential version. We will need to go into a closed work session if the Commissioners intend to discuss confidential details. Otherwise, the staff presentation today does not cover confidential material. We will discuss each recommendation in turn as we go through the staff memo, although in the interest of time, we will not cover every detail. But first, we will begin with the procedural history of this docket.
Good afternoon Commissioners. As Haley mentioned, my name is Brooke Umstead and I'm a Rate Analyst in the Regulatory Division. Going through the procedural history of this docket, Northwestern filed its application to increase electric and natural gas rates in July 2024. The filing was subsequently noticed and 11 parties moved to intervene. The procedural schedule for this docket was established in September 2024 and the Commission granted intervention to the following parties: The Montana Consumer Council, or MCC; The Large Customer Group, or LCG; The Federal Executive Agencies, or FEA; Walmart; The Northern Cheyenne Tribe, or NCT; The University of Montana, or UMM; Triple Oak Power; And then the following are collectively known as the Joint Parties: The Montana Environmental Information Center; Human Resource Council District 11; Natural Resources Defense Council; And Northwest Energy Coalition. Over the following nine months, the Commission granted an interim increase to the utility effective December 1st, 2024, and a slew of deadlines passed where the utility interveners and Commission staff built the administrative record. Four stipulations were filed in March and April 2025 resolving some of the contested issues. Then the Commission held a hearing on this docket in June 2025 and post-hearing briefs were finalized in August. Pursuant to statute, a final Commission decision must be issued within 90 days after briefing with an additional extended period of 30 days for good cause shown. With the 30-day extension, if approved by the Commission, the deadline for a Commission decision would be December 24th, 2025. As the application was filed in July 2024, the staff recommendations before you today are 16 months in the making. We will go through each recommendation, beginning with the two remaining contested issues.
Commissioners, in all rate cases, the Commission reviews a utility's costs to determine whether they are prudently and reasonably incurred. The Commission reviews the prudency of a utility's costs based on information and circumstances that were known or should have been known at the time the costs were incurred. The prudent standard requires sufficient evidence to raise serious doubt that a reasonable utility manager, under the same circumstances and acting in good faith, would not have made the same decision and incurred the same costs. If an intervener presents sufficient evidence, the burden shifts to the utility to dispel those serious doubts. When Northwestern acquired the Yellowstone County Generating Station, or YCGS, in 2021, Commission rule provided that a utility must be allowed to recover all costs it prudently incurs to procure and manage an electric supply portfolio that serves the full load requirements of its customers. That rule provided that whether the costs a utility incurs are prudent is in part directly related to whether its resource procurement process was conducted prudently. At the time Northwestern developed its 2019 IRP and conducted its RICE and Capacity RFPs, Northwestern's resource planning and procurement processes were governed by Montana Code Annotated 69-8-419 through 421 and Montana Administrative Rule 38.58201 through 8229. Based on its analysis of the record evidence in this case, staff concludes that there were significant deficiencies in the planning and procurement processes that raised serious doubts about whether Northwestern minimized total costs and risks for customers over the long term. As we will explain, staff concludes that Northwestern's planning and procurement process did not adequately evaluate the full range of cost-effective resources, was not fair and transparent, and did not cost-effectively manage and mitigate risks. Staff finds several instances of where Northwestern did not evaluate the full range of potentially cost-effective resources. The evidence shows that Northwestern eliminated an 18-megawatt RICE option in the RICE RFP and did not evaluate it as part of the portfolio analysis in the Capacity RFP despite the 18-megawatt RICE unit being a preferred resource across a range of scenarios modeled in the 2019 IRP, particularly when paired with battery resources. MCC also raises serious doubts about whether Northwestern reasonably evaluated the full range of cost-effective resources. MCC contends that an offer from an existing CCCT would have been less expensive and less risky than YCGS and would have resulted in a lower total portfolio cost per megawatt of accredited capacity. MCC asserts that YCGS outscored the CCCT because Northwestern evaluated the bids as part of a portfolio constructed by Northwestern instead of evaluating the cost of each bid directly. It's not clear whether the set of portfolios Northwestern designed by hand includes the least-cost portfolio. As I just discussed, it's clear at least that one portfolio combining the 18-megawatt RICE unit and lithium-ion batteries was not included. That concern is amplified by the fact that 27 of the 36 portfolios Northwestern designed included YCGS. In contrast, Northwestern designed just one portfolio with the CCCT. The Joint Parties contend that Northwestern's ride-through-capacity requirement is an atypical capacity accreditation method and that the portfolio Northwestern selected based on the ride-through requirement was not the lowest-cost portfolio that would have satisfied Northwestern's portfolio or Northwestern's capacity need. During the planning process, the Commission retained to evaluate Northwestern's IRP and ultimately the Commission itself had concerns with the ride-through-capacity requirement. Because the requirement was not explained or used in the IRP but appeared for the first time in Northwestern's draft Capacity RFP, the Commission emphasized that Northwestern would bear the responsibility of demonstrating the reasonableness of the requirement in a future proceeding. Resource planning is ultimately meant to inform the resource acquisition process and the Commission's comments on IRPs serve as an important regulatory signal to the utility on its current and prospective resource planning and procurement decisions. Ultimately, the record lacks sufficient evidence to support the specific capacity quantities and ride-through duration periods comprising Northwestern's ride-through-capacity requirement. Northwestern's application does not translate the duration analysis provided in the 2020 IRP supplement into the ride-through-duration requirements included in the RFP. Consequently, staff finds persuasive the Joint Parties' arguments that lower-cost resource portfolios might have been available, which further supports a finding that Northwestern did not evaluate the full range of potential cost-effective resources.
Additionally, Commissioners, Northwestern experienced challenges keeping the YCGS project within budget and within the set timeframe early on in the construction process. Northwestern chose a new-build option at a time when economic conditions were flush with COVID-19 impacts. As MCC, LCG and FEA observed, Northwestern's Capacity RFP included offers from resources that likely would have entirely avoided the risks and subsequent cost overruns experienced by YCGS. Northwestern acknowledged in the preapproval docket and at the hearing in this rate review the risk of its decision to acquire YCGS. The YCGS project came in approximately $45 million over budget and the plant substantially came online nine months later than expected. This $45 million is largely due to the engineering, procurement and construction of the plant, otherwise known as EPC. Commission rules emphasize the importance of evaluating, managing and mitigating risks through transparency and documentation. Construction costs are explicitly identified as a source of risk. During construction, with tensions rising between Northwestern and its original EPC contractor, Northwestern chose to terminate this contract. It then proceeded to hire a new EPC contractor without utilizing a competitive solicitation process. Northwestern had the responsibility to properly document its decision-making during this process but failed to do so during this critical event, which led to approximately $45 million in additional costs. With the lack of transparency and documentation, staff is unable to determine if Northwestern acted prudently and acted the same as a reasonable utility manager would under the same circumstances. And staff agrees with MCC, LCG and FEA, that Northwestern knew it was making a risky decision when selecting YCGS. These facts, coupled with the flaws in the procurement process, indicate Northwestern did not cost-effectively manage and mitigate risks.
In addition, Commissioners, Northwestern did not satisfy the requirement for a fair and transparent RFP process with respect to the RICE RFP. In fact, most, if not all, of the record evidence regarding the RICE RFP originates from a single data response, PSC244. During the hearing, Northwestern was unable to provide a witness to adequately testify to the analysis and decision-making process conducted during the RICE RFP, citing employee turnover as the reason. Given the importance of the RICE equipment in Northwestern's ultimate resource selection, the lack of transparency surrounding the RICE RFP and the decision-making is a significant deficiency in Northwestern's process. Furthermore, Northwestern bears the burden of proving by a preponderance of evidence that the acquisition of YCGS and the recovery of its costs in customer rates is in the public interest. In this case, Northwestern did not satisfy its burden of proof, as demonstrated by the analysis detailed in the staff memo and discussed today. Throughout the resource planning, procurement, construction and rate review processes, Northwestern made several consequential decisions that were not justified with sufficient evidence. Staff agrees with intervener Renewables Northwest that in this docket, Northwestern has continually failed to meet its burden of demonstrating that YCGS represents a prudent investment or to furnish the Commission with sufficient data to verify that fact for itself. The deficiencies in Northwestern's original application, the volumes of data requests required to fill in gaps in the application, and the degree to which Northwestern's data responses refer to information it previously filed in the preapproval docket demonstrate that Northwestern could have been more thorough in its application.
And finally, Commissioners, determining the prudence of a resource is guided by statute, rules and the prudent standard. For the reasons discussed today, staff believes Northwestern's resource procurement process was flawed. The utility did not evaluate the full range of cost-effective resource options. The utility did not cost-effectively manage and mitigate risks, and the utility did not meet its burden of proof by a preponderance of evidence. Staff recommends the Commission accept MCC, LCG, FEA and the Joint Parties' position on YCGS to exclude recovery of cost overruns of approximately $45 million. Staff also recommends approval of LCG and FEA's proposal to include a full year's worth of accumulated depreciation in YCGS rate base to comply with regulatory accounting fundamentals. These adjustments result in an annual YCGS revenue requirement increase of approximately $34.8 million. Staff's recommendation is approximately $13 million less annually in comparison to Northwestern's proposal. And that covers our presentation on YCGS. We will move on to the second contested issue not settled in the partial electric stipulation, the Power Costs and Credits Adjustment Mechanism Base, or as we know it, the PCAM base. The PCAM is Northwestern's electric tracker in which it recovers electricity supply costs on an ongoing basis outside of a rate case. Although costs are covered and trued up on an ongoing basis, the PCAM base is set in a rate case. The PCAM base is important because it establishes the threshold for sharing certain costs. Some PCAM under and over collections are shared with 90% accruing to customers and 10% borne by shareholders. There is an inherent issue with sharing in that Northwestern has an incentive to overstate the base and interveners have an incentive to understate the base. This leads to the PCAM base being a major contested issue in rate cases. I hope you'll see with staff's recommendation today that staff is focused on setting a base that reflects actual costs incurred by the utility. As you will find in the partial electric stipulation, MCC contests the inclusion of a $38.4 million capacity scarcity premium included in the PCAM base. The capacity scarcity premium is added onto the estimated PCAM base to account for extreme weather events. Staff fully agrees with MCC that there is no historical precedent for assuming an annual scarcity premium of this amount. Staff further scrutinizes Northwestern's powersim model used to estimate the PCAM base. It is unclear why the powersim model utilizing historical data would not reasonably forecast the inclusion of extreme weather events and Northwestern has not provided any data to warrant an arbitrarily constructed adder on top of the powersim projection. Staff recommends the Commission reject this methodology of establishing a baseline adder to adjust for market price escalation in extreme weather events. And although staff agrees with MCC's argument, staff recognizes that the forecasted base in this rate review is substantially under collecting actual costs. Proper utility ratemaking is setting rates to the cost of service, which is why staff recommends adopting Northwestern's proposed PCAM base of approximately $119 million. And to take it one step further, staff recommends temporarily suspending the sharing mechanism until the Commission can thoroughly evaluate the properties of the PCAM in another docket. That covers staff's presentation on the contested issues, YCGS and the PCAM base. Moving on to revenue requirements in the partial electric stipulation, staff utilized a range of reasonableness to evaluate the stipulation in assessing whether the agreed-upon revenue requirement increase results in just and reasonable rates. The Commission's task in a rate case is to balance both the interests of consumers and the utility. The range or zone of reasonableness is bound at one end by the investor interest against confiscation and at the other end by consumer interest against exorbitant rates. The settling parties propose a total increase of approximately $61 million for electric transmission, distribution, generation, excluding YCGS. This includes a settled return on equity of 9.65%, the same as that approved in the last rate review in 2022. While the partial electric stipulation does not specify the exact derivation of the proposed revenue requirement increase, it does summarize the significant terms of the agreement. For purposes of evaluating the $61 million increase, staff determined a range of approximately $49.6 to $81.2 million, reflective of ROEs of 8.88 to 10.05%, represents a reasonable range of potential outcomes had the settling parties not reached a settlement in this case. Staff's adjustments to Northwestern's rebuttal position to arrive at this range or zone of reasonableness are outlined in the staff memorandum. Staff recommends approving the partial electric stipulation revenue requirement increase of $61 million with a return on equity of 9.65% as it results in just and reasonable rates and is in the public interest. As a reminder, this is not the total electric revenue requirement increase. Including staff's recommendation on the contested issues, the YCGS revenue requirement increase is approximately $34.8 million. The PCAM base is a decrease of approximately $94.5 million and staff's total electric recommendation is summarized on page 74 of the staff memorandum for a total combined electric revenue requirement increase of $1.5 million. Now, a portion included in the settled electric base revenue requirement is related to wildfire mitigation. Northwestern proposed a wildfire mitigation balancing account, or WMBA, in this rate review. Section D of the partial electric stipulation accepts Northwestern's proposal with important modifications. The Commission has recognized the importance of wildfire mitigation efforts in prior rate reviews with approval of Northwestern's hazard tree removal program and then deferred accounting for incremental wildfire mitigation costs. The balancing account proposed is a form of a tracking mechanism, which is usually guided by strict criteria for approval. Historically, the Commission has only approved trackers if the costs were substantial, outside the control of the utility, and unpredictable and volatile. A simple example of a tracker that meets this criteria is an electricity supply tracker like the PCAM. While staff finds the WMBA does not meet this strict criteria, extraordinary circumstances exist to which alternative recovery of wildfire mitigation costs should be considered. The risk of wildfires is increasing in Montana and inaction would lead to increased safety, reliability and financial risks to not only the utility but also customers. With that in mind, staff finds the proposed WMBA to recover incremental operating and maintenance and insurance expenses to be prudent. Staff recommends approval of the WMBA with additional reporting requirements, including the filing of a benefit cost ratio analysis in its annual compliance filing and an updated wildfire mitigation plan in its next rate review.
Section B of the partial electric stipulation outlines the stipulated revenue allocations if the Commission approves the partial electric stipulation and accepts either Northwestern's LCG or MCC's position on the contested issues. As discussed previously, staff recommends approving the partial electric stipulation and adopting LCG's YCGS depreciation adjustment, MCC's YCGS position and Northwestern's PCAM position. This scenario is not contemplated by the partial electric stipulation, but the stipulation does not prohibit this outcome. Notably, the partial electric stipulation states the associated reduction with accepting MCC's YCGS position flows entirely to the residential class. In accepting MCC's position, staff believe the Commission has two options. The Commission can accept that associated reduction flowing entirely to the residential class as outlined in the stipulation or require the associated reduction flow across all customer classes on a pro-rata basis based on each class's share of the current base revenues. In accepting LCG's depreciation adjustment, the adjustment would need to be recalculated to align with the depreciation expense proposed by MCC. The partial electric stipulation requires the associated reduction then flows to all classes based on their pro-rata share of the current base revenues. Staff recommends the Commission require Northwestern to submit a compliance filing with supporting work papers detailing the revenue requirement allocation attributable to each customer class based on the Commission's decision for YCGS.
Commissioners, if you recall, the Commission approved interim rates effective December 1st, 2024. Northwestern proceeded to self-implement original application rates on May 23rd, 2025 pursuant to Montana Code Annotated 69-3302 Subpart 2. Then Northwestern updated its self-implemented rates to reflect its position in the partial electric stipulation citing a past water docket as precedent for implementing stipulated rates in the interim. These implemented rates, in comparison to staff's recommendation, are seen on page 74 of the staff memorandum. I would note that natural gas is not presented because Northwestern did not self-implement natural gas rates and interim rates that were approved by the Commission are still in effect today. Northwestern proposes that any electric refund be calculated and then dispersed by customer class as if the final order had been in effect as of May 23rd, 2025. Northwestern will track the revenue collected for each current rate in effect during this period by rate class. This revenue would then be compared against what would have been collected had the final order been in effect for this period. Northwestern also recommends the Commission order Northwestern to refund the over collection with a 9.65% interest rate. Pursuant to Montana Code Annotated 69-3302 Subpart 2, the interest rates set by the Commission may not exceed the cost of equity as last determined by the Commission. In Northwestern's last rate review, docket 2022-07078, the Commission approved a cost of equity of 9.65%. No party has contested Northwestern's methodology for refunds. Staff recommends the Commission approve Northwestern's methodology for electric refunds and recognize that self-implementing contested rates is not a precedent for future rate reviews. My apologies. That goes through all of staff's recommendations for the electric utility. Moving on to the natural gas stipulation revenue requirements. Staff utilized the same range of reasonableness analysis to evaluate the stipulation in assessing whether the agreed upon revenue requirement increase results in just and reasonable rates. As I mentioned earlier, the range or zone of reasonableness is bound at one end by the investor interest against confiscation and at the other end by consumer interest against exorbitant rates. The settling parties proposed a total natural gas increase of approximately eighteen point one million dollars for transmission, distribution, storage, and production. This includes a settled return on equity of nine point six percent, just five basis points higher than the prior approved ROE in two thousand and twenty-two. While the natural gas stipulation does not specify the exact derivation of the proposed revenue requirement increase, it does summarize the significant terms of the agreement. For purposes of evaluating the eighteen point one million dollar natural gas increase, staff determined a range of approximately fourteen point four to twenty-three point one million dollars, reflective of ROEs of eight point eight eight to ten point zero five percent, represents a reasonable range of potential outcomes had the settling parties not reached a settlement in this case. Staff's adjustments to Northwestern's rebuttal position to arrive at this range or zone are outlined in the staff memorandum. Staff recommends approving the natural gas stipulation revenue requirement increase with a return on equity of nine point zero six percent, nine point six zero percent adjusted for the two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six production asset step down rates as it results in just and reasonable rates and is in the public interest. Staff also recommends the commission approve the settling parties' proposal to continue to continue deferred accounting for natural gas production asset acquisitions.
As mentioned, staff recommend approving the natural gas stipulation. Section B of the stipulation outlines the agreed upon revenue allocation and rate design. Staff believes this is a reasonable outcome, moving each class further closer to its cost of service and finds the outcome to be reasonable. Moving on now to some non-revenue requirement issues. We'll begin with the SES one, SESS one stipulation. Northwestern proposes a new schedule SESS one tariff, which applies to customers that have onsite natural gas or similar generation with a minimum capacity of one hundred kilowatts. Northwestern stated that its proposed tariff is meant to encourage customers with large onsite generation to operate their system efficiently and only take generators offline during times of low demand, as well as ensure they pay for their fair share of system costs. The University of Montana is a customer which would be subject to Northwestern's proposed tariff. U of M does not dispute that a new rate for standby service customers should be implemented. However, U of M asserted Northwestern did not follow industry best practices when it developed its tariff. On March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, Northwestern and U of M filed a joint stipulation which resolves issues between the two parties regarding the schedule SESS one tariff. Staff recommends that the commission approve the stipulation so that it is applicable only to the University of Montana project and order Northwestern to file a revised tariff in its next rate case that adequately addresses the concerns addressed in the staff memo. And now, moving on to the Northern Cheyenne stipulation. The Northern Cheyenne Tribe or NCT addressed transition planning for Coal Strip. It had recommended opening a separate docket dedicated to the planning, planning the future of Coal Strip, as well as the owners of the Coal Strip plant establishing an economic transition fund. Northwestern had disagreed with the need to mitigate the impact of the closure of Coal Strip, asserting it was premature considering the utility has not proposed closing the plant. And again, on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, Northwestern and NCT filed a joint stipulation which resolves the issues between the two parties regarding the future of Coal Strip. Staff recommends the commission approve the settlement between NCT and Northwestern. Moving on now to low and moderate income customers. The joint parties addressed affordability and the low income bill discount offered by Northwestern. They had asserted that the low income energy assistance that reaches Northwestern's electric customers is insufficient and poorly targeted. They recommended that the flat bill discount offered by Northwestern currently be modified to a tiered rate discount, adopting in a rearage management program and developing a cost recovery surcharge to fund the program. Northwestern disagreed that its share of wallet calculations was flawed, but is not opposed to looking at energy burden by income or actual usage levels as suggested. Northwestern asserted the commission should not make the low income program a contested issue and should instead allow time for the ongoing stakeholder process from docket two thousand and twenty-two dot oh seven dot oh seven eight to work. Staff recognizes that Northwestern has engaged with stakeholders as required by Order seventy-eight sixty Z. However, the joint parties correctly point out that Northwestern has not made meaningful progress on low and moderate income affordability since the last rate review, and staff believes stronger direction from the commission in this docket is warranted. Staff recommends that the commission order Northwestern to maintain its low income stakeholder group and develop proposals to address the structural issues with Northwestern's low income affordability. Northwestern would be required to maintain the stakeholder group and file biannual updates through the next rate review until the commission issues a final order in that docket. The first update would be required six months from the commission's order in this docket. Moving on now to Montana Administrative Rule. Northwestern's rate case application is subject to the commission's minimum filing standards set forth in Montana Administrative Rule thirty-eight dot five dot one oh one through one ninety-five. On August seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the commission issued a notice of commission action that identified multiple instances where Northwestern's application fell short of full compliance with the minimum filing standards. Specifically, Northwestern did not comply with thirty-eight dot five dot one seventy-seven part two, which requires the billing impact for each customer class must be provided. This analysis must indicate how many customers on each tariff would receive bill increases or decreases of various percentage and dollar amounts. Northwestern did not conduct the required distribution analysis of customer usage within each tariff as required. Staff attempted to obtain this information through several data requests. However, Northwestern was unable or unwilling to provide this information. Staff recommends that the commission order that in its next rate case, Northwestern provide the complete bill impact analysis for each customer class as required by the commission's rules. And then lastly, moving on to annual reporting. During the evidentiary hearing, the data Northwestern maintains for non-payment disconnections was discussed. During the line of staff cross-examination questions, Northwestern indicated a willingness to provide this data to the commission. Staff recommend initiating a rulemaking at a later date to amend the commission's administrative rules governing utility annual reports. The utility annual reports provide a consistent reporting mechanism across all utilities rather than continually requiring compliance filings in this docket. By initiating a rulemaking, all utilities would be required to provide this data to the commission each year. And that concludes all of staff's recommendations to the commission. Brooke, Teresa, and I are available for any questions you may have. We also have the other regulatory analysts available to help answer questions. Thank you, and I will join the commission at the bench to assist with maintaining confidentiality during the Q and A.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so members, as discussed during our scheduling meeting this morning, I think what we're going to try to do is work through the stipulations this afternoon and save the contested issues for tomorrow. So with that, I've pulled out the excerpts of the stipulations and there's six items that could each be handled as individual motions. So that's what I'd like to do is entertain each one of these as an individual motion. If the commission's willing to make those motions and we can discuss each one as needed, one by one and get through these. So with that, is there a motion on the natural gas stipulation?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the natural gas stipulation and apply the two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six production act asset step down rates to the stipulated production revenue requirement, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion on that motion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Commissioner Wellborn's motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. I heard four ayes.
There was five.
There was five ayes? Okay, thank you. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And next, we'll consider a motion on the standby electric service schedule stipulation with University of Montana. Commissioner Wellborn.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the standby electric service schedule, otherwise known as SESS dash one stipulation. And anyway, the agreement between Northwestern and the University of Montana with the requirement that is only applicable to the UM, University of Montana's project.
Is there a second? Thank you. Commissioner Molnar has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next we will entertain a motion on the Northern Cheyenne Tribe stipulation.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the stipulation and settlement agreement between Northwestern and the Northern Cheyenne Tribe.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pinocchio has seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Molnar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess for staff. I've been perplexed by this since I first read it. What is it we are stipulating in agreement to? They basically agreed to keep discussing amongst themselves what the roles and ramifications would be of Northwestern should there be an economic shutdown in their area. Why is this a rate case? I don't see any rate component to it. I don't see anything other than a discussion to continue to discuss exactly what does this do? If we pass it or if we do not pass it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Molnar, I believe what the parties have stipulated here today is to continue good faith negotiations as things develop with the plant and to stay in contact with the Northern Cheyenne Tribe. But if you have further questions as to what's explicitly in the stipulation, I would defer to analyst Haley Gobert.
Mr., or excuse me, Commissioner Molnar, I had a similar question on this and found no financial commitments in this stipulation and therefore it's not, it's not a portion of the rates. And although there's enhanced recruitment and education and outreach that is the emphasis of the direction that the parties are going, any expenses for that would be subject to review under a rate case when those expenditures are brought forward to the commission.
Right. I don't understand why it was brought forward to begin with. Then it got settled and they're agreeing to agree to continue a discussion on things outside the purview of the PSC, as I can tell.
Okay. Is there any further comment from staff on that?
I believe the question was shunted.
Did you have any comment on that?
Chair Fielder, I would just add that although generally rate cases do involve, you know, financial considerations, often more policy-based considerations are enveloped in rate cases. So clearly, the Northern Cheyenne Tribe felt this was the appropriate vehicle to address their concerns and they were able to resolve that with the utility without any commission intervention.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of Commissioner Wellborn's motion regarding the Northern Cheyenne Tribe stipulation, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries four to one with Commissioner Molnar dissenting. Right, we will next entertain a motion regarding the affordability for low and moderate income customers. Commissioner Wellborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move affordability for low income, low and modern income customers. The motion would be to order Northwestern to maintain its low income stakeholder group to address structural problems with Northwestern's low income affordability programs and file biannual updates through the next rate review until the commission issues a final order in that particular docket.
Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Pinocchio has seconded the motion. Is there discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries five to zero. Next, we will consider a motion regarding Montana Administrative Rule R dot thirty-eight dot five dot one seven seven part two. Commissioner Wellborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move to order Northwestern to provide its next rate case the complete bill impact. Let me start over, sorry about that. I would move to order Northwestern to provide its next rate case the complete bill impact analysis for each customer class as required by Montana Administrative Rule thirty-eight dash five or one seventy-seven part two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pinocchio has seconded the motion. So just to be clear, the motion is to order Northwestern to provide in its next rate case the complete bill impact analysis for each customer class required by this administrative rule. Is there discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Molnar.
Is it, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, is it common that we will not know the bill impact for a rate case until the next rate case? Is that what this is saying?
Ms. Gobert.
Chair Fielder, Commissioner Molnar, and what we're seeing here is the bill impacts were provided but not the full requirement of the rule. So the second part of that rule requires the analysis must indicate how many customers on each tariff would receive bill increases or decreases of various percentage and dollar amounts. So that was the key piece that was missing from Northwestern's initial application and staff was unable to receive from Northwestern through discovery. In the past, as I understand it, Northwestern has provided this information.
Further question?
Commissioner Molnar.
Thank you, Ms. Gollie. So if they don't provide it, we just vote and find out later what it was. If we kill, if we do not go along with this stipulation, then are they required to give us that information?
Chair Fielder, Commissioner Molnar, I don't believe this has any bearing on the stipulation. Maybe I'm not quite understanding your question.
Okay.
Could you clarify?
By rule or law, they were supposed to provide the complete bill impact analysis for each customer class. They did not do so. So if we say no to number five, then do they have to provide that? Or what happens? If we wrap this up, say tomorrow, we don't know how it affects any particular rate class and won't know until the next rate case, which may be several years from now. I'm pretty sure they'll be billing, so they must know.
Chair Fielder, Commissioner Molnar, so under this rule, Northwestern is always required to provide this information to the commission as part of its minimum filing standards when it files a rate case. The commission, at the time when determining whether Northwestern's application met the minimum filing, felt that Northwestern did, you know, meet the minimum filing and it did not meet that higher threshold, as we had talked about, you know, so many months ago. And the staff felt ordering this in the final order would provide stronger direction to Northwestern that the commission would expect it to comply with its minimum filing standards. that the commission would expect it to comply with its minimum filing standards.
Further question, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Molnar.
Thank you. As I recall, and there's a lot of things I don't get right exactly the first time through, but when they first filed, it was rejected, I believe, three times because they did not do cost allocations, which is what this is. So, they were rejected three times for not doing it, so we didn't let them go forward and then say, well, since they didn't do it, I guess we'll have to hold your feet to the fire for two, three, four years from now, whenever the next rate case is, you will tell us what the net effects of our votes were. That just doesn't quite seem logical to me, what am I missing?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Molnar, I would just like to clarify that in the original application, Northwestern did provide bill impacts for that application, and that this specific rule today is to provide additional information in regards to bill impacts. And if your question was getting at the idea that staff did not present bill impacts to you in the staff memorandum, that is because Northwestern was only willing to provide bill impacts for their scenario in the stipulation. And the parties did try to get bill impacts through discovery.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question? During the hearing, there were a lot of graphs and charts, et cetera, on bill impacts. And I had a tough time understanding them. I finally asked Mr. Lane, are any of these accurate, and he said no. That, I believe, is a matter of record. So, what are we relying on at this time? The original consideration based on what they hoped would happen? Or after the settlements, what is it we're relying on at this time?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Molnar, unfortunately, at this time, staff has not had the time and the resources to conduct an internal analysis to determine the bill impacts of staff's recommendation. I can say on the natural gas front that the natural gas stipulated revenue requirement is very similar to interim rates. Again, they did provide the bill impact analysis of that stipulation. However, it didn't account for the production asset step-down rates, so it's not completely accurate. And for the electric, again, staff in our best efforts tried to get the bill impact, so unfortunately, the commission would be making this decision without that information.
Further question?
Follow-up.
Thank you. Since how this says after the next rate case, and we have no idea when that would be, is there any reason we couldn't ask that it be completed by whatever it is we do pass, by Northwestern, within 30 days, 45 days, 60 days, so that, while it might not be usable, people and investors, et cetera, could actually use that information to make their determinations and what they would want to do in the way of cost-effective conservation, et cetera, like that? Is there any way to change, or is this rule pretty ironclad? That we have to wait until the next rate case to find out what it is we did?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Molnar, I apologize, I think I got a little off track in answering your questions, and that the motion before you right now is solely applicable to what will be filed in the next rate case. I don't want to confuse what the motion is right now in comparison to what you will be voting on in the natural gas and electric stipulations for those bill impacts. They are separate, and for this motion, I think you can move to approve it, to get additional information in the next rate case. And then, when it comes time to vote for the natural gas and electric stipulations, you could then order Northwestern to update its bill impacts for the commission's orders in a compliance filing to be filed shortly after the order is issued.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, any other discussion from commissioners on this motion? What I'm gathering here is, I mean, the rule is already in existence, and they already have to comply with it. We're sending a stronger signal saying we're expecting a more thorough submittal on this particular point because we weren't able to obtain it during this cycle, and I would suspect that if it's not thorough next time, it's just going to be a rejection until they get that completed, so it's a strong reminder, I would say. So, with that, I'll be supporting the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed to the motion, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one, with Commissioner Molnar dissenting. All right, the next item is the annual reporting for non-paid disconnect. Commissioner Wellborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would move to initiate a rulemaking to amend the commission's administrative rules governing utility annual reports to include non-paid disconnect reporting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pinocchio has seconded discussion. I believe what this motion will do is authorize staff to start the rulemaking process, and they will bring a draft rule to us that would then set into effect the timeframes for public comment and review and completion of that rulemaking. With that, is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, with that, commissioners. So, all the question for the staff, are all the docket staff who presented today going to be available tomorrow morning to return, should the commission choose to return tomorrow morning?
Madam Chair, I believe so.
Gobert. The other half of the tag team.
Madam Chair, yes.
And Teresa. Okay, thank you. With that, members, I would, the chair would entertain a motion to move that the commission now adjourn to meet at 10:00 a.m. on November 19th, 2025, for the purpose of continuing work session number two and subsequently concluding this business meeting. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, it has been moved and seconded that the commission now adjourn to meet at 10:00 a.m. on November 19th, 2025, for the purpose of continuing work session number two and subsequently concluding this business meeting, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries three to two. With that, members, we are adjourned until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, we will see you then.